Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on June 3rd, 2025, and I'm gonna call this regular city council meeting to order. Councilmember Vasquez and Deputy Mayor Miller are excused this evening, and if you're able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, oh, I also like to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Madison Creek, including then the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. And with that, can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda and consent agenda items?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have the approved agenda and consent agenda. And first up on our approved agenda tonight is our last Lacey Youth Council end-of-term recognition. Sadie.
You can tell they're super excited that I'm gonna come talk about them with you guys tonight. So we're here to do the last Youth Council update and recognition for the 2024-2025 term. What we have up here is a very brief timeline and kind of highlight reel of some of the things that the Youth Council worked on this year, starting in August with their orientation and getting that Lacey 101 overview. What is Lacey? How do we operate? How does City Hall work? Going into September, the Youth Council got to learn all about Robert's Rules, public records, and communications at the city. October, for the first time ever, the Youth Council got to go to the Lacey Maker Space and learn about the facility after their remodel, and then also did some of their very favorite things, public speaking and public speaking exercises and practice. November, they got their first overview of the comprehensive plan. That is a big thing. The Youth Council had the opportunity to overview and participate in this term. In December, they got an overview of that comprehensive plan survey and got to learn how easy it is to balance a city budget. January, we went over the new Advisory Board demographic survey information, since it was the new calendar year, and that's when the city takes the opportunity to gather that information. They also got to go over results of the comprehensive plan survey. In February, for the first time, they did the Lacey Cultural Celebration and also got a public safety overview with Chief and Trip, and then did a joint session with the Commission on Equity. March, we went over the council action process, how council takes ideas and puts them into action and creates policy, and then they had the opportunity to review the Human Services Grant Program and look over all of those service needs assessments. In April, we did a joint session with the Lacey and Olympia Youth Councils for the first time ever. And then in May, they started wrapping things up, participating in the Lacey Spring Fun Fair as they do every year, and learning about the community survey. And now we are here in June. They finished their last meeting, getting to hear an update on the Metropolitan Park District and the impacts that that could have. This year, we had a lot of firsts. Once again, this is our largest Lacey Youth Council cohort. This is the first time that we have had more applicants than spaces on the Youth Council. Only up to fifteen students are eligible to serve on the Youth Council. We started with twenty-seven applications, so that was a huge success for our last recruitment cycle. This is also the first year we've had representatives from the homeschool student body and Summit Virtual Academy students, so a very well-rounded Youth Council. As this council knows, the city now has a Human Services Commission, so we had the opportunity to have a representative from the Youth Council serve on that new commission. This is the first time the Youth Council has got to do community engagement at the Lacey Cultural Celebration. They co-hosted a booth with the Commission on Equity and had community discussions, and was the first time that the city's anti-hate speech clause and information was available to the public. They also have got to hear about the community survey. Lacey is doing a community survey right now. It's the first kind of its, first type of its kind, excuse me, and the Youth Council got to learn about that and review that with our communications manager. They still continued to serve at the Spring Fun Fair. This year, they were at the information booth, partnered with city staff, and able to help people and provide information. They also got to review the comprehensive plan in multiple ways. This year, the Youth Council also had members serve at the local DEIB summit on a youth panel, where we had three Youth Council members go and speak on this panel to the community about youth concerns and equity. And for the first time, the Lacey Youth Council and the Olympia Youth Council met and had a joint meeting to discuss things, including the upcoming youth summit in 2026. One of the big things, as I've mentioned, was reviewing the comprehensive plan. We were able to get an overview. What is a comprehensive plan? Why is it important for the city? And how can the Youth Council provide feedback and input for that? They got to review the survey before it came out and get to see the survey results from that survey. And one of our Youth Council members was even lucky enough to win one of the community gift cards for participating. This year, we had a change to our collaboration with the Commission on Equity. As I mentioned, the Youth Council went to the Lacey Cultural Celebration and co-hosted a booth. They also changed how they did their joint session with the Commission on Equity. Historically, they have done a joint meeting where they have kind of given an update on their priorities and what they're working on, and this year, they shifted gears and had equity-based discussions with the commissioners directly, reviewing with them the experiences they have with equity, both good and bad, at their schools and in the community. And that is them at the cultural celebration. This year, they got to participate in human services by giving feedback for the focus group. Our Human Services Coordinator, Michelle Chavez, came and reviewed all of the focus group questions with the Youth Council, as she did with other advisory bodies, identifying gaps in available human services in the city. As you can see up here, the Youth Council had identified some things they find to be priorities in human services, including houselessness, affordable mental care, and having information sharing and communication targeted towards youth in the community. And this year, the Lacey Youth Council met with the Olympia Youth Council, who is on their first term, and had a joint session here. They went over and discussed all sorts of youth and community concerns. So what we found is they may be in two different jurisdictions, but they have very similar experiences and concerns for their communities. And part of this meeting was also reviewing what they want to do and plan for the Lacey Youth Summit with the Olympia Youth Council in partnership in 2026. And the unofficial theme is Adulting 101, so more theme need to come, with the goal to partner with the City of Olympia and host a biannual summit to have the opportunity to plan in advance and work together and take some ownership of that summit, and then also provide resources for how youth can prepare going to that next level, graduating, what they can do to maintain their physical and mental health while transitioning into college, what resources they need to be successful, and then also taking time to have discussion panels at the summit from youth talking to youth. As I mentioned, this year, some of our Youth Council members also had the opportunity to go to the Thurston Forward DEIB Summit and discuss in front of a panel and participate in this first-time panel and summit on their experiences and concerns for youth in the community. Currently, the Lacey Youth Council is recruiting for next year. We've already had several applications come in, and they have all been doing an excellent job spreading the word about that. We are losing four Youth Council members who are graduating seniors this year, so hopefully we will be able to see some returning students and also recruit some new students for next year's term. So I am going to invite our Youth Council members up to come get their recognition from you, council, and then they would like to share their kind of final each highlight and takeaway from this term. So first, I have Lilly Schneider. This is Lilly's first term with the Lacey Youth Council. She's a senior at North Thurston.
Good evening. Like Sadie said, my name is Lilly Schneider, and I'm a senior at North Thurston High School. Through Lacey Youth Council, I was able to receive a deeper understanding of our local government and all the different boards and members that allow our city to operate and function. I have become more confident in my public speaking and cooperation, and I was able to meet and make a lot of new friends and meet a lot of people that I wouldn't have met otherwise. Unfortunately, I do have to leave right now to go to a tennis banquet, but I am very grateful for this opportunity, and I am very thankful that I applied to, for this position a year ago. So, thank you.
Next, we have Iliana Allen. This is her second term on the Lacey Youth Council. She is a senior and one of our Pope John Paul II students. They know you all have heard from her. As the only Pope John Paul representative for the last two years, she's got to come talk to you every report.
Thank you, Ms. Sigglen. Hello for the final time, council. I just wanna say that over the past two years, I have loved getting to be more involved in the community at large, especially coming from a private school. You don't really hear about the, like, local events like the Spring Fun Fair or the Diversity Summit. So having that opportunity has been wonderful and getting to explore what participating in the community and, like, advocating for what I believe in means in the larger scale. So, thank you.
I'll let you all wait and shake their hand at the end, maybe. They were really looking forward to that. El Hadj Chior. This is his first term with the Lacey Youth Council. He's a senior at River Ridge High School and also served as our Human Services Representative.
Good evening, council. I'd first like to share how grateful I am to have been part of the Youth Council. One of my favorite things was collaborating with the Olympia Youth Council and working on next year's youth summit. I also appreciated getting to know my fellow Youth Council members. I learned a lot from our conversations and teamwork. Lastly, I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve as the representative to the Human Services Work Group. It was honored to bring a youth perspective to important decisions for our community. Thank you.
And then next, we had Joel Whipple. This is his first term from North Thurston, and Joel was our first social media coordinator that we had in the Youth Council.
Hello. As she said, I'm Joel Whipple. I go to North Thurston High School. I'm a junior, and I'm glad that I got to be a part of this and really glad that I got to see what y'all do for the community up close.
Thank you.
And then we had Arun Kumar. This is his first term from Timberline High School. He also served as our Parks Culture and Recreation Board member and got to do a little video collaboration with the mayor this year for an FBLA project.
Good evening. I would just wanna say I'm thankful for getting the opportunity to be on the Lacey Youth Council and the Parks Recreation Board. I learned a lot about the government, worked with a bunch of people. It was really fun.
And then we had Avani Kumar. This is also her first term from Timberline High School, and she served as the representative to our library board.
Good evening, council. I'd just like to say that I'm really grateful for this opportunity that I've had to serve at the Lacey Youth Council and as the representative of the library board, and I'm also really grateful for all of the fun memories that I've made with everyone here. Thank you.
Kieran Seals-Pow. This is her first term with the Lacey Youth Council, and she is our first youth representative from Summit Virtual Academy and was our representative to the Commission on Equity this year.
Good evening, council. My name is Kieran, as Sadie said, and-
My name is Kieran, as Sadie said, and I've really enjoyed being able to participate in all the community events, like the Lacey Spring Fun Fair and the Cultural Assembly. I've gained a lot of new connections with people that I look forward to following through with those events in the future, and I'm just really grateful to have gone to learn everything. Thank you.
Next, we have Dior Trin. This is her first term on the Lacey Youth Council. She is a junior at River Ridge High School.
Good evening, council. I'm Dior Trin, and I'm a junior at River Ridge. I would like to say I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I love being part of the Lacey Youth Council. Some of the things I very much enjoyed about being part of this is making the new connections with friends and people here at Lacey, too. I've learned that they're very much connected, and I never knew that, honestly. And I just loved everything that I learned. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we had Isabella Valero, who, this is her first term on the youth council from River Ridge, and she was our youth clerk this year.
Good evening. I'm Isabella Valero, and I'm a sophomore at River Ridge High School. I think one of my favorite parts was the social aspect and getting to learn about other people's experiences at different high schools and also learning about our future plans for Lacey, and I hope to return next year. Thank you.
And next, we have Lydia Neet. This was her first term on the Lacey Youth Council. She is from Northwest Christian. I'm sure you all recognize her. She also had to give every single youth council report this term for her school.
Hello. My name is Lydia Neet, and I'm a sophomore at Northwest Christian High School, and I just am very, very appreciative for everything I've learned at Lacey Youth Council, because I did not know how government worked before this or how the town worked. I thought things just were kind of like willed into existence. And I just learned how, just how much work and labor and passion goes into basically everything that happens in this town, and so I really appreciate discovering that. Thank you.
And then we have Luca Friolich. I say it wrong every time, sorry, Luca. This is his first term at the youth council, and he is our first homeschool student to serve on the Lacey Youth Council and recently had the opportunity to meet with Thurston Talk and give an article and some feedback for the recruitment.
Thank you. Like she said, my name's Luca, and I've been representing the homeschool community every month. I had a great time learning about the city and how it works. I especially enjoyed meeting people like the police chief that came last fall, and I didn't realize how much it takes and how many people it takes to run a city this well. I enjoy my time with the other council members and Ms. Siglin, and I'm hopefully going to do this next year. Thank you.
That is all, council. If you have anything for them, maybe we could get a photo?
Yeah, well, let's do a quick photo, but before we do that, I just want to say how proud I am of our youth council. And the thing I hope we can take away from this is that, you know, when we first started the youth council, back, actually, back in 2019, when we started the first youth council, I had this idea in my head how we're hoping it was going to be, where we'd have representatives from each of the high schools and homeschool and everything. And we just realized it took a while for us to sort of have that vision, and nothing ever goes necessarily how it's planned. And it's how you sort of adapt and learn and grow that is so important. So for you to see that firsthand and for you to continue to sort of learn and helpless guide, making the decisions for our community, it was the whole purpose of why we wanted youth council. So I just want to say how proud I am of you, how thankful I am that we continue to learn and grow together, and I wish you the best summer, and we'll hopefully see some of you back next year. And so let's come up with a quick picture.
Perfect, so we're going to give them some, give them some pieces of argument, again? One, two, three.
Hey, Andy, I was going to say something.
Hey, council, before you leave.
Real quick, how many of you are 18 and seniors this year? All right, well, if you're 18 before filing week, or really, it's just November, right? Second week, second Tuesday of November, you guys should really consider filing week because you have a really good experience. We're not know-it-alls up here, but I know one day, one of the council members from the youth council will challenge one of us, and that will be a good thing. It won't be a bad thing, okay? So you guys really consider it in the future, okay? So anyways, I just want to say thanks for your service.
Thank you, youth council. So next up on our agenda is our Fire District Three Education Prevention Program. Chief Schmidt, come on up.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I feel like we're at a disadvantage starting after the youth council, because I don't know how we compete with that. And I was thinking, I wish that that existed 30 years ago, because we might be better public speakers had it been. So thank you for having us here tonight. I know we talked months ago about the fire district being able to be present at these events and giving updates, and this invite out was really timely, because we have been launching a new division in our fire district called Community Risk Reduction. Before I start on that, just if you don't know, my name is Jennifer Schmidt. I'm the fire chief at Lacey Fire. I've got a whole six months under my belt, and I was able to succeed Chief Brooks, who I found is very terrible at retirement. So he is, he's doing lots of the community. So I also have my co-pilot here, Michael Sarofsky. He's a deputy chief of administration, and I jokingly tease him as the grandfather of community risk reduction, because he came to Lacey Fire with this vision. So community risk reduction in general is something that's not new to the fire service. It's actually the heart of the fire service. It's a division that looks at how to work with public safety, how to work with partner agencies, and how to really optimize what we do for our community. I'm going to, let me see, I'm working here, talk a little bit about our objectives. I'm going to give a quick historical overview and a little bit of a problem statement to you all tonight, and then Chief Sarofsky is going to take over, and he's going to talk about what his team's been developing. We're going to talk about most, the most important element of what we're talking tonight is our business safety inspection program, what the funding mechanism looks like for that, the performance deliverables that you can expect, and then obviously have some questions and discussion. Before we jump into it, I did want to let everyone know that we do have an assistant chief who is heading this division underneath Chief Sarofsky. His name is Jason Roberts, and he fell ill this morning, notified us early, and is incredibly devastated to not be here tonight. So we're wishing him well, and the way that I liken his absence would be getting the flu on the day of your senior prom. He was really ready to go tonight, so we're going to do our best to fill his shoes. But I want to start out first by talking about kind of the historical review of the Lacey Fire District's involvement in community risk production, what that looks like with the City of Lacey. So in 2009, we actually had an agreement with the City of Lacey in our governmental agreement, and the three big elements of that agreement was that the fire department would provide business inspections throughout the year to the businesses that were within the city. The other thing was we would provide investigative services after events in hopes to have cooperation, we still do, with PD when it comes to investigating fires of certain magnitudes. And then the final one was to continue with safety education in our community. All of those three things, I think, were, it made sense in 2009. It still makes sense for us to be good partners. We take that role really seriously, because not only does it marry well between the city and the fire district, but it allows our members, our firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs, to be, to be out in the community, providing the education, the investigations. But specifically, the business inspections was a key point for that. So if you think about it, we, the historical perspective is our members that are on our fire engines, our medic vans, and on our aid units are actually going out in the middle of their normal response days, going to businesses, hopefully being able to pre-notify that they're coming in, but working as collaborators on, on safety, going in, talking about the safety elements, their, you know, their fire sprinkler systems, their different alarm systems, things like that. And it gives our crews an opportunity to be inside these businesses and learn about them in the moment, also, again, just having relationships with the community. In 2020, as we all know, the pandemic hit, and not only was it a difficult time for emergency response, but there was actually a big shift in call volume. It made it difficult for our members to get out into the businesses, because we were trying to kind of keep distances, keep people safe from, from getting sick. But then in addition, there was really a kick-up for call volume shortly after that. And that's when we started to come to a point where I'm going to give you our, our problem statement. What we found is that our crew members still loved going out, doing inspections, delivering education, and doing all of those things, but we found more and more that our crews were stressed with call volumes. What we found was, even though they were getting out and doing these inspections to businesses, when they were going out, oftentimes they were being called away in the middle of these inspections, which they felt like was probably not the, you know, most professional way to deliver them. It interrupted what was going to be a good collaborative time, and then obviously, it was very hard for the businesses to accept that they didn't know when these inspections were going to kick back up again. So there was a real detriment to what we were providing, and I think our members started to feel that. Obviously, through the pandemic, we started to kind of identify, is there another practice that we can consider where we could provide better safety, better collaboration, and a better product to our community? So I'll pause there and say that about '23 was when Chief Sarofsky really started talking about what does a more holistic approach look like to public safety in, in the City of Lacey and beyond? And he started visioning what community risk reduction could look like, and I would say recruiting within our ranks to help kind of answer the problem statement that I just set up for you. So I'm going to step out of the way and let Chief Sarofsky take over from here.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. Incredibly exciting to be here. Community risk reduction is a huge passion for me, and I'll start with that North Star, that idea of what are we trying to accomplish here? And I believe that everyone, if I can make that work, everyone who lives, works, and plays in the Lacey community has a reasonable expectation or should have a reasonable expectation of safety. And that's from the dangers of fire that threaten our homes, that threaten the places where we work or the places where we interact in the community. That's accomplished by a community risk reduction effort that's proactive and preventative. It's the one thing that we can guarantee a visit to people that we work with and interact with in the community. As you know, emergencies happen when they happen, and we can't predict that. But this is a place where we can guarantee that interaction and have a focus that's proactive and preventative. We also have a workforce that in CRR that's made up of experts. So just like we have experts in our medic vans and our fire apparatus, we want to have established experts as fire inspectors, as fire investigators, and fire educators. And that's where this program comes into play. Another interesting notation that I discovered in my research and involved with community risk reduction is that in 25% of the cases, businesses that experience a fire loss or a fire impact or other tragedies similar to that, 25% of them fail within the first year. Another 65% fail within the second year. That's a massive impact to the community health, the continuity of operations, and for us to thrive and continue to pay our people so that they can live and work and thrive in this community. What we wanted to accomplish was an analysis of the businesses in our community, so we understood the size and complexity of those. We did that, thanks to the work of Chief Roberts, who couldn't be here tonight, by looking at our assessment, assessor data at Thurston County Assessor's Office, by looking at data that exists here at the City of Lacey, and also by looking at the data we've collected over the years at the fire district. We also wanted to identify a plan that regularly allowed for inspections to take place in the community, and our target is to get to 100%. And I'll talk a little bit more about how that impacts some of our third-party analysis. And that inspection program is also based on a risk analysis. So when we look at a small coffee stand or a pastry shop, that might have a lower risk category than, say, a distribution warehouse that might have hazardous materials on site or have complex detection or suppression systems in place to protect high rack storage or hazardous materials or other things like that. And then that all equated to a workforce needs analysis, so the number of inspections is a simple math, right? And then you divide that into the number of people you think you need to complete 100% of that safety inspection program. So I looked at things like, what can I ask my staff to do? And I don't want to be that kind of boss that says, I need you to do 800 inspections a week and do it on your lunch break as well. That just doesn't work, right? So what can reasonably be expected? So we did some research on different inspection programs. How many inspections can an inspector reasonably accomplish while also dealing with things that might pop up according to maybe a fire that needs to be investigated or a public education mission? Or maybe they need training and they need to be away from their, their office duties? Or maybe they have vacation planned, or they're getting married or having a baby? So all that analysis brought us down to a number, and then we divided that into the number of inspections we believe we have, and that gave us what we believe was a projected workforce. That helped design our fee schedule, which I'll show you here in a minute. It's in your packet, but I'll walk you through it here briefly. But I want to reference that in the state of Washington, I'm from Colorado, and Colorado, we don't have anything like this. In the state of Washington, there's an RCW that allows for us to invoice or bill for fire inspections. And coming from Colorado, that's really important, because when we had budget constraints, what was the first thing that got cut? It wasn't the apparatus on the, on the street that responded to emergencies. That's the thing we can't predict and we have to be prepared for. It was the, the support functions like inspection services, training services, and things like that. We looked at comparable funding mechanisms, and I'll show you that as well, and that's just the different ways that different agencies charge for services. Some are by the hour, some are not charged at all, or some are charging, but they're charging inadequately, so they're ineffective in collecting the revenue to have the necessary staff to be successful with that 100% inspection target. And then, of course, I talked about the tiered schedule. So what we're going to charge for that small pastry shop or that coffee stand is very different than what we would charge for that distribution warehouse. The complexity is just not there, and so we wanted to make sure we right-size that. The other important thing we wanted to have is some deliverables. So we have a wonderful relationship with the City of Lacey. Over the last several years that I've been here, had a great relationship with Terry McDaniel, Asher McCabe, and all of the staff at the city building office and fire marshal's office. They're an outstanding resource for all of the things that we do on a regular basis, and it was important for us to be a complement to that. So what can we do to take care of those inspections, those routine visits, and let the expertise land where it's supposed to with regard to plan review and more complex community design? 100% inspection rate, as I said, is a really big deal, because that allows us to look at that third-party compliance, so the WSRB or the Washington Survey and Ratings Bureau. Our last review, we were further away from the four and closer to the two, but we're still a three. We believe with this program, we're going to see a much more successful effort to get to that two rating. And as you know, that has an impact on lowering insurance rates for our business community as well as our residential community. Lower rates for insurance have an impact on everyone's pocketbook, whether, whether you work, live, or play here. And then, of course, that fire investigation element is super important. We're skilled at fire origin and cause. We're not, we're not experts in interviews, evidence collection, and those kinds of things. So that's another element of the authority, having jurisdiction, being the law enforcement community here in Lacey, being a critical role for us to support in those fire origin and cause investigations. So we make sure that we don't have fires taking place that shouldn't be taking place and adding risk to our community. You've seen this comparable fee schedule in your packet. It talks about the different structures that are out there, some are by the hour. We felt that was an inappropriate way to look at a fee schedule. We want to have an outcome-based inspection program, not an hourly-based one. There's others local in the community that have shared with us that they need to change their structure, because they're not adequately funding the program that they need. So thus, their divisions are not as well-staffed as they need to be to complete that 100% target. And so this is just an example of some of those structures that are out there throughout the state of Washington. And then the last thing I'll show you is that district fee schedule that we're proposing. You'll see in the top, 1,000 square feet or less, a $49 inspection fee. And that happens every other year, because that's a low-complexity investigation, or inspection. All the way to the other end of the spectrum, that 80,000 square foot or greater, extreme large building, the complexity is built into the base rate of $147, and then that, that annual inspection is $882. And then that, that annual inspection is $882. In the cases of extreme hazardous materials, whether you're producing that, storing it, transporting it, receiving it, utilizing it, that would create the need for an inspection twice a year. And again, that's an important element. I'm sure you've seen in other communities where a disaster takes place related to hazardous materials and that impacts roadways, it impacts the, our, our air quality, our water quality. And we want to make sure that we're doing things to prevent those things wherever possible from happening. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed one little, I went too fast. And I blew it, so forgive me. Bottom line on that bottom chart you'll see is what we believe our net revenue is based on the number of businesses we've identified in the community. If that number is off, if we find more businesses operating in the community than they're actually tracked, then we'll see a difference in that. And our structure is designed that the, the volume drives the staffing that we need to accomplish the objective. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Chief Schmidt.
I'm going to, I'm going to summarize what Chief Sravsky has shared with you all, and I hope that everyone understands the sentiments of the community risk reduction. For, for lack of better terms, over many years has been what we would call firefighters, other duties is assigned. So firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, as they're out, these are all the things that they've tried to accomplish in the downtime between calls, and they've done a fantastic job. As our community has grown, our, our, our business spectrum is so large and so unique for this county. Most of the time, fire departments, when we look at strains on staffing, we look at higher call volumes, we look at application of additional units. That's an aid unit, a medic unit or a fire engine, plus the staff on four shifts to maintain it. And as you can imagine, that's several million dollars every year. If we're being good stewards of the taxpayers, we're being good partners, we're evaluating how do we best meet these needs of the community and do it in a fiscally responsible way? When we did our audit, that looks like two or three staff members that are specially trained to do all of these things, alleviating, keeping the members on the streets for only the things that they can do and us being good stewards of partnerships, public safety and being able to get out and do the inspection. So I, I shared that with you because our interest would be to not deviate from the intergovernmental agreement that we have, but rather look at a possible resolution that allows the fire district to charge, knowing that this income just does nothing more than support the staff that it would require to maintain and keep up those, those current inspections that we're having trouble doing at this time. So again, we're presenting the community risk reduction idea. We'll be doing more of that to the community, and our hopes are that they not only do these inspections, but again, increase our public outreach and communication and certainly be better stewards and, and better partners in investigations in the community. So we'll pause there. I know we gave the community a lot, we gave the council a lot to review. We're open to any and all questions, if you have any.
Any questions?
My, my just question, a little bit on the fee schedule, just so I'd get some understanding of the thought process was, a business that would be 10,001 square foot would pay 588, but one that was 80,000 square, so eight times larger would only pay 147 more dollars. So I'm just kind of wondering where the thought process was behind that when it seems like a lot more.
Yeah, thank you for that question. We looked at, when we looked at the comparable structures and looked at the size differences, oh, we saw a range of size and complexity in that analysis. So we had to find some breakover points. I think that when Chief Roberts went through and looked at the number of businesses to try to identify the majority, the sizes of those businesses, to establish what made the most sense, and then thought about what's it going to take to walk through this building? What's it going to take to look at and verify the detection system, the suppression system? And, and, and make certain that that, that value is added to their inspection process and being able to satisfy them with, with a report that's going to help them with a lower insurance rates over time and maybe even something they can submit to their insurance company. The structure was very similar to other structures in other places in the, in the community. And there is going to be that place where that, that one business is, you know, 9,098 versus 10,000. I think that it'll be upon our responsibility to look at those sizes and make sure that they're accurate and be transparent with the business owner so that they understand the value of the work that we're doing for them and, and that it's justified for what they're, what they're receiving.
My thought was more like a $600 fee on a, a business that's 10,000 square feet, which is a much different business than 80,000 square feet. It's a much larger burden than if you're running an 8,000, 80,000 square foot operation, you know? That's a, a much different impact than on a smaller business. So that's where the small business versus large business, it's a pretty big gap there. So my, my only concern.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
So the, I'm assuming if you're trying to get 100% compliance on this, these, these inspections are going to be mandatory.
Correct.
How is that going to be? Who's going to, what's the enforcement method?
That's another excellent question. Thank you so much. Well, the reason that we're taking this process in the sequence that we are is that we recognize that the city of Lacey is the authority having jurisdiction, and that's why coming and speaking to you today is important. We, we believe that it's important for the city to support the efforts that we're doing just as we're asking our board to support us in a fee structure and, and a schedule. And that is where the authority is baked into the International Fire Code to conduct inspections. It is a responsibility of the, of the authority having jurisdiction or they're designated, in this case, the fire district. And so that's the authority to complete those inspections. But it's not just about, hey, we are, we have a right to be here, we're going to come in here and, and, and start inspecting, writing things down. Our strategy is going to be to initiate a conversation with our business community early on and say, hi, we want to meet with you. We want to come, who's the best person to talk to? And we want to come out and talk about, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it. Let's plan a time that works best for you. We don't want to have an inspection take place during their peak business hours. That's not appropriate. And we want to develop a relationship that's successful for the business owner as well as, as the fire district. So working in partnership with making sure that we're compliant to the fire code, we're making their community, their business safer, we're working to prevent those risks of loss from a fire. And, and then I think our philosophy is by doing that, we have a successful relationship whereby there's a value seen in that inspection.
I just, a couple of quick things I just add. So I'm in the, I, my day job, I'm in the insurance business, and I can tell you that a written report that's delivered to the businesses actually could have impact and help them on insurance rates. That's, that could be a real benefit to the businesses. And especially if you can actually get the PC class down to two, because that is, that will save everyone, homeowners and businesses alike, it will lower their premiums for sure. The other thing I would just add is, since you are obviously going to be working with the business community, I would just suggest that you should get in touch with the Chamber of Commerce and, and do these kinds of meetings. Do, you know, I'm sure they'd love to have you come and speak at one of their forums, that kind of thing, and get it out to more of the business community in this kind of a format.
Yeah, thank you for both of those. Those are some of the strategies that we've talked about. There'd be a period of needing to educate the community, also letting them know that our, our goal was always 100% compliance, even, even in 2009. It's just a matter of how efficient were we really? And so I think educating the business community, this isn't a new thing. It's just we're, we're, we're trying to be like more, more effective and, and more efficient with it. So definitely, and then those are some of the things we were talking about, facts and questions and making sure that the business community found the value in it. So not only the partnership, the education, relationships and understanding, being able to ask questions about, you know, emergency response, but then also letting them know this actually can add value, you know? And although there are fees associated with, there's hoping that there is a return, you know, in the long run. So we talked about having a period of time between now and, and hopefully through most of the remainder of the year, being able to connect with groups like the Chamber of Commerce and homeowners associations and things like that, so that not just the business community, but the community at large had understanding of what we are working on.
You know what? So I'm, I'm actually really happy to see this because I have businesses in several different jurisdictions, and every jurisdiction does it differently. And it's so, it's so hard to try to figure out, you know, where you're at on, on your inspections and everything because it, it really does make a difference if you receive a written report and that they're there to help you be safer. So there's a lot of things that can come into an unsafe circumstance, right? Where do you have all your MSDs and all, all those other things? And if you, if you do, it's, you can prove that to your insurance company, it can, it can make a big difference. And so, but I'm curious about fines and, and follow-ups. That's not in this at all. Are you not, if, if a business is way out of compliance and refuses to go into compliance, are you going to find and find a business? And that, that's not listed anywhere.
Thank you again for that. I think that when we think about fire inspections and fire education, I would, my experience is that 70% of the inspection is education and building a relationship and showing the reasons why these things are important, whatever they may encounter when they do that inspection. If we can develop that relationship and, and accomplish that through education, we're, we're 90% there. If we have a situation with, when we look forward and we have support from the city, we have support from the board, this is an established practice that's established across the state, we're, our, our goal is not to find, that's not, that's not successful, that's not going to get us where we want to get. But we may have that happen in, in a few cases. And I think that the, at the end of the day, that inspection report is kind of like currency when it comes down to that, that insurance filing that happens every year. And so our hope is to continue this program, to develop relationships not only with the build, business owners, but the insurance community. Because if we can showcase to our business owners, there's going to be a net benefit to you, not only in the public protection class of three to two, but also in your independent relationship with your insurance carrier, then we have some, some, some success and some reason for a, a successful transaction. We may have those cases where we're, we're stuck and they're not compliant, and we'll deal with that through processes, through, you know, invoicing people and, and using bill, bill collection if that's what it takes. That's the worst-case scenario on the optimist, that we're going to have an established, successful relationship, and they're going to see the value in it. Because at the end of the day, the best fire we have is the one we don't go to. And, and I, that's, that's the root of it. Our firefighters are prepared to do those things, they're very well-trained, and, and they're, they're eager to be on shift, to have that opportunity to do their, do their work and be skilled at it. But honestly, when you look at it, we don't want that to happen at all. And that's what we want to prevent in our community.
Go ahead.
So my business is owning buildings and, you know, some quick math, you know, and, you know, I'm not an insurance guy like Lenny, but if, according to my quick math is if I can save 5% of my insurance, it will pretty much pay for this, which means, you know, your, your services are paid for and the, and the community is safe, is safer. And so to me, I'm optimistic so that this would be, you know, beneficial.
What's, what's the next step here? Do you, is, do you need something from the city or are you going forward or is there inter-local or what's, what's next?
Yeah, our, our recommendation would be that the, the council considers a resolution that allows us to charge. So we already have software, we already have the mechanism to do that, we already have conversations with, you know, with members of the city, and that would be supportive and helpful of it. If a resolution was passed, then we would be able to do it fairly seamlessly. We wouldn't immediately jump into that. We would want to do education, we would partner with the city to say, this is what we would like to explain to people, this is how the process goes. And again, our effects and question information, and then take several months. It would look a little bit like a political campaign and going out to the chamber and to different groups. So I think, again, it would just be consideration of a resolution, and then that would help us build out. And again, we mentioned that this would fund a couple of positions. It takes time to get those people trained up. So we're not talking at a, about a flip that we would switch tomorrow necessarily, but time to kind of build up, and we would want to do that in partnership.
Okay. Well, I, I would recommend that we, you know, we direct staff to, to work up a resolution so we can have considered a, a future council meeting. Everyone on board with that? Seeing a bunch of head nods.
So we'll work with that and coordinate with Chief Schmidt and her team and, and bring that forward at the, the right time.
Okay.
And we'd certainly be open to if there's more questions as they usually do come up and thoughts, we'd be grateful to answer those between now and then as well, so.
Great.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So next under presentations is our water utility summer update. Finally having to think about, do I turn my sprinklers on? Not yet, but it's getting close.
It is in effect, actually.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, I know it's in place, I just haven't turned my sprinklers on yet. I'm 100% compliant.
So the water shortage response plan, oh, I wanted to say good evening to the council, first of all. I'm Charlie McHenry, Water Resource Specialist for the city of Lacey. So the water shortage response plan for 2025, it's a document that is updated every year. It was first compiled in 2014 and it gets updated every year. So the purpose is to give a, a written document and guide in case of either a weather-related water shortage, like if we had an extended drought, natural or human caused disaster such as an earthquake and other water system operating emergencies, like if something happened to one of the wells unexpectedly and we didn't, we weren't able to produce as much water as normal, we have this plan in place. The numbers that, that determine what the different trigger levels is, is the present possible production, the P3 number. And it is the maximum well pumping time 24 hours a day. And it depends also on available standby and operational reservoir capacity, so how much water we have at the given time, you know, we expect to have in the, in the storage facilities. It's measured in million gallons per day. It's in effect June 1st through September 30th, and it can be modified by the water shortage response team anytime. Last year, the P3 numbers were updated, I think like three or four times for different reasons. So it's a, it's a fluid number. It just depends on what conditions are occurring throughout the, the months designated, so. Oh, and 20.62 million gallons per day is the estimate of how, what the maximum water production will be for this coming, this season that we just started. So the different levels, we have stage one, two, three and four. Stage one advisory, that's what we're in right now. It's, we ask all the water utility customers to abide by the audio and schedule, so, and it's in effect June 1st through September 30th also. And then you can see the different numbers for the different levels here. Internal action, 16.5 million gallons per day. And the internal actions, stage two, the, is something that we do with city property. And then we also ask the school districts to abide by our internal action plans. But the general public will not know that we, you know, they won't see a difference. We're not asking them to do above and beyond the mandatory watering schedule, so. But then if we get into stage three or stage four emergency, that's a different thing. There will be lots of outreach to the general public. Stage one, like I said, the mandatory audio and watering schedule. So I'm sure everybody who's hooked up to City of Lacey Water is familiar with that. We get a lot of, we get a lot of word out there about it. The goal is to reduce the demand by 15%. It's, it applies to all residential and commercial water customers. And the reason is, it's to reduce the peak demand. It's a, it's a water management tool. It's, we're not asking people to, you know, cut back for, we want people to conserve water, but this is a management tool because we have an infrastructure that can supply a certain amount of water. During the wintertime, 6 million gallons per day is the average peak consumption by all the water customers. And then in the drier summer months, it goes up to an average of 13 million gallons per day. Sometimes it is much higher than that. And when it gets closer to tripling, that's when the water utility gets a little worried about things. But this is average and it's been like this for quite a while. So as you can see, we have quite a difference in the amount you can see, we have quite a difference in the amount of water. And this is almost ninety-nine point nine percent due to outdoor watering of grass and shrubs and landscaping. That's what causes the majority of this jump in the water usage. So, we have the odd even schedule, it's been in place since 2006. Lacey Municipal Code thirteen point four-eight point zero-one-zero is the legal authority for the City of Lacey to manage the, the water and establish this odd even schedule. And basically, we're just asking people to take turns, and that way, we'll have enough water and enough water pressure in case of an emergency, say like wildfires or something. We want to make sure that we have enough water for domestic use, as well as businesses, and in case of emergency. There are exceptions to the odd even schedule, which includes potted plants and hanging baskets, commercial and residential greenhouses, publicly owned playfields where they've invested a lot of money in their playfields, and they're used very heavily. We don't want them to have to, you know, let their lawns go brown, because it would basically destroy the fields and all the public money that's gone into it. Washing vehicles and pressure washing is also exempt. But if you have an address, your physical address ends in an odd number, your assigned three days are Saturday, Monday, and Wednesday. And then if you have an address ending in an even number, your assigned days are Sunday, Tuesday, and Thursday. And then we ask that nobody waters on Friday, and this allows the wells and the water towers to recharge and refill before the weekend, when usage is typically higher than during the rest of the week. If somebody needs an exemption because they just planted grass or sod, or just put in, you know, a thousand dollars worth of plants, and they need to get the plants established, they can get ahold of water resources and get an exemption, and it'll be temporary for six weeks, and this gives plenty enough time for the plants and the grass seed and the sod to get established. If somebody needs a variance, say like they, maybe their, their work schedule doesn't allow them to, to do the outdoor watering of their yard on the scheduled days, they can ask for a variance. And I keep track of all this on a spreadsheet, I got everybody all organized, so I know who's got variances and who's got exemptions, and how long they, you know, when, when they expire and everything. And then, once again, this is allowed through the Lacey Municipal Code, and there's contact information, my number, and then water resources, if anybody needs an exemption or a variance or if they want to discuss any issue with odd even schedule, they can get ahold of me directly. So, stage two, we talked about that a little bit, that's the internal actions that we take, like we'll cut back on watering of some of the city-owned property, the planter strips and that kind of thing. There'll be additional outreach to commercial irrigation customers, the top twenty-five, I'll, you know, shoot them some email or call and let them know, hey, you know, we want you to cut back a little bit more. There's different reasons for that. We did it for a little bit of a time last year, because there was a couple of wells that had some planned construction and revamping that was going on, so, you know, things happen. Let's see, then, the internal auctions, here we go. Yes, and, and we stopped washing vehicles, I think I mentioned that. So, stage three was getting kind of more serious. That's the public message that we would project if we did get into a stage three. It's my understanding that the city has not had to go to stage three before, there's been multiple times when we've been in stage two, but do you know if we've ever been in stage three? Ed, do you know?
No, we never have.
We haven't, Scott? Okay, so we never have, so keep our fingers crossed, we're doing really good, barring any kind of emergency. And so, the Water Shortage Response Team is the group that would be making the decision on what particular steps that we would need to take if we were in a stage three mandatory water shortage. So, everything would be ramped up a little bit, as far as if people were not complying with watering restrictions, that would be a lot more serious when we are in a stage three emergency. I would do outreach, or water resources would do outreach to the top fifty commercial irrigation customers who are our biggest water users. And then, city-owned landscape would be reduced by twenty percent on top, yeah. So, we're cutting way back. Stage four emergency, this would be our forward-facing message here. Stage four emergency is, like, like we said earlier, if there was an earthquake, or if there's other reasons, like an extended drought where the, that would reduce the, we have a hundred percent groundwater, for one thing, in the City of Lacey. However, if there was an extended drought that, say like we didn't get enough rain all winter long, we had a dry spring, we might be looking at, you know, possible severe shortages. If, if we did, the wells are being monitored, we would know what stage we would need to be in. But there's, you know, that would be the most serious, and so, if we were in stage four emergency, there would be no watering allowed of any grass, we need to save the water for drinking water, right, for domestic use. That's the most important thing, is domestic use, so that people have drinking water, so no irrigation of grass. Prohibit hydrant use, no swimming pools are going to be filled, we need drinking water, we don't need to fill pools. And then, we wouldn't allow, like, power washing of sidewalks or anything like that, spring water off on sidewalks. And that would also be the Water Shortage Response Team, that would be determining what particular measures would be taken. And that would also include restricting water, outdoor water usage and irrigation of all city property, as well as the school districts. So. And then, this is a graph that shows the average hot peak, low and peak production for the last, it's twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four. So, this is the average for those years, and then the blue line that you see is this year's current peak production, or, yeah, peak production. So, you can see that we're kind of like on the top edge of that line, and we're in good shape right now, but that's, that's our current situation. So, if anybody has any questions about that, we do have Ed Andrews, who is our water and wastewater maintenance supervisor, and then we have also Brandon McAllister, our utility engineer, and Justin Bellis, our senior water distribution tech. If you have any questions about the technical side of the Water Shortage Response Plan or the present possible production, they're here to answer your questions in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
And then, I also had the 2025 Water Quality Report, I don't know if that's queued up or not, but. On the presentation. If not, if not, I will tell you quickly about it. The 2025 Consumer Confidence Report is a, it's a document that is required to be compiled and submitted to the Department of Health every year, and it's been in effect since nineteen ninety-eight. It has all the contaminants that have been tested for, for the year of twenty-twenty-four, it's all listed in the report. It also has source information about it and rebates. It has a link for the local drought information, and it has some information about backflow prevention. I brought some copies of it, it's over there on the table, so if you want to pick one up. It's also available on our water quality page of our Lacey website, and it's been translated into five other languages, so it's also available in Vietnamese, simplified Chinese, Korean, Spanish, and Tagalog. So, and it's downloadable. We also will be distributing them to apartments, senior facilities like Panorama, and we'll also be taking them to public places like the community center and the veterans hub. So, it's going to be available to the entire city, just hot off the press, but we'll be starting that distribution here this week. Any questions about the, the Water Quality Report?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Now, on to our next agenda item, which is public comment. We did have one person sign up for public comment. Courtney, could you please come up, introduce yourself, and there'll be a timer for three minutes. And if Lacey Fire District, you guys want to go, go ahead, I don't blame you guys for leaving at all. We'll, we'll see ya. We appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you.
All right, I'm Courtney Marie Holt House. I'm in federal litigation against a business here in Lacey. I lost my apartment because I stood up against Providence St. Peter's Hospital, MultiCare Lacey Emergency, Town Water Police Department, and Washington Department of Corrections. My apartment's already back on the market, only a few days after I left, for a hundred dollars more a month, while I was forced out and erased from the city I called home. I was crushed by medical malpractice tied to workplace retaliation. They slapped a label, bipolar wand with paranoia, on me with absolutely no evidence. That label isn't just a diagnosis, it's a weapon. A weapon that you can use to justify forced treatment, to lie about my condition, and to keep me trapped in a system that refuses to see me as a person. In pain, exhausted, I packed my life into my car and kept fighting, working the equivalent of multiple jobs just to hold on to my dignity, occasionally wetting myself from the stress. I'm only twenty-nine. I begged city leaders for help. I was told I could talk to the mobile outreach team, who are tied to Lacey Police Department. I'm suing a police department nearby. That's not help, that's a setup for more harm. I'm not going anywhere. Persistence is my resistance. If I stop fighting, who knows how many more will be labeled, forced into treatment, or dragged to a psychiatric ward based on lies and fear when they speak up. This city has a choice. Act now or admit it's complicit. The clock is ticking. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing none, let's go on to our next agenda item, which is resolutions, resolutions eleven sixty-seven, our safety action plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Tonight, we're requesting that you approve Resolution eleven sixty-seven to establish a Target Zero Vision policy and adopt a safety action plan. This is a new program that was started with the bipartisan infrastructure law, Safe Streets for All. One of the requirements was that you have to adopt a safety action plan to be able to apply for a construction project. Scott here will be able to tell you about the safety action plan, but what we were able to do is prove that our work on College Street is the best project that we could start with. So, I know I'm a little late, but the grant is due June twenty-sixth, and everybody upstairs is working on it. So, that's the main purpose of this. So, we kind of did two-step process. My biggest fear is I do not think that the new administration will continue with the Safe Streets for All program, so we'd like to be able to apply for it this year. I think it has one more year eligible. So, I'll let Scott Lindlum, our good friend that used to be with Thurston County, now with David Evans and Associates, tell you all about it.
Good evening, Council, Scott Lindlum with David Evans and Associates. We had the pleasure of working with Martin and his team on this project. So, very excited to do this, and I will try to, oh, yes, I am successful so far, I like it. So, as Martin alluded to, the city applied for and received funding, sixty-eight thousand dollars for a Safe Streets for All action plan. It's a discretionary grant program from the federal government. And the purpose of the grant was really to get two things done, develop the safety action plan to improve safety on city streets, but also, as Martin mentioned, to be able to check the box to allow the city to be pursuing federal grant funding to advance some of the city's projects. Once finalized, once the action plan is finalized, which I believe is in your packet, and the resolution is signed, then, again, the city would be allowed to apply for the funding. This is a, kind of the second step in the process. The first step was getting the grant, second step was getting the action plan done, which is in your packet, and then the implementation grant Martin was just referring to would be the next step, assuming funding or hoping funding that is received, then that money could be used on some City of Lacey projects. So, the action plan looks at the most recent five full years of data. So, this plan was started the second half of two thousand twenty-four, so they looked at two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three, the most recent five years of data. And what it found is that crashes are trending upward, meaning that there's, the trend is more and more fatal and serious injury crashes on the city streets. Again, that's in your packet, so the numbers are somewhat small, but in the box down below, it shows that there's been nearly five thousand crashes, not just fatal and serious, but also just five thousand crashes over the, that five-year period on the city streets. Sixty-four of those in that same period were fatal and serious crashes on city streets. And as you can expect, that's inconsistent with the goal of Target Zero, which is to reduce those fatal and serious crashes by zero by the year twenty thirty. The most common crash factors that lead to the crashes, I guess, were distractions, speeding, you know, it's, it's the cell phones, it's people getting distracted trying to multitask, changing the radio. Speeding is certainly another big factor in these crashes, as well as failure to yield, impairment, you know, there's lots of drinking, lots of drugs, unfortunately, in the cars that people are using. Bicycles and pedestrians were overrepresented, and by that, I mean, thirty-eight percent, so nearly forty percent of the fatal and serious crashes were people on bikes, were people walking, trying to get around the city without using their cars. Certainly, I don't know the exact number, but I would expect there's far fewer than thirty-eight percent of the users of the road, being bikes and pets. So, they're, you know, sadly, overrepresented. So, part of the program, or part of this project, the team put together an online survey, which was posted late December, all of January. It was translated both in English and in Spanish to gather feedback. All told, received over two hundred public comments, two hundred and thirty to be exact. And the top concerns that people raised, and this was, it's always helpful to get the perspective of the users of the roadways, users of the past. of the users of the roadways, users of the paths, because we can sit in the design offices and come up with the best ideas, but it's the people in the street that often can have some really good input. And they did provide that. They identified the public's concerns of the most dangerous or most at-risk intersections. It was college and Pacific, just as a factoid for you. Speeding was another issue that came up quite often. Unsafe crossings, those are the pedestrians. Those are people trying to cross perhaps where there is no pedestrian crossing. In addition to the public survey, the team worked with the Safety Action Plan Task Force. That's with people with North Thurston School District, Lacey Fire, City of Lacey Police, as well as the Equity and Inclusion Program with the City of Lacey, and certainly our friends at Public Works. Through that effort, the approach, you know, looking at the, the five years of data, the community feedback, and the data on the crashes itself, you know, several high-risk areas really jumped out. College Street actually was, when you look at the high-risk intersections of the top five in the city, College Street had three of the top five, they were, I guess, the highest risk of the intersections. And Marvin Road rounded out the top five, too. So there's two intersections, two intersections on Marvin that were in the top five, and three on College. So no surprise, the top five high-risk corridors, as you can imagine, College Street, Marvin Road, but also Carpenter Road, Yelm Highway, as well as Martin Way. So the, the next step in this is really the implementation phase, so that we, we have the plan done. It identified, by looking at the data, the high-risk areas. That was really, I, I guess, the, the public feedback kind of mirrored what we saw in the numbers. So then we get to the implementation phase. In a safe systems approach, which is what this is, it was used to develop these strategies to identify specific projects. And in the action plan, there are a series of specific projects outlined. Not only what the project is, but some ideas on what could be done to actually implement those improvements. So this plan kind of guides us on this approach to look at safer streets, look at speed management, and kind of with those areas where the risks are highest. Fortunately, as Marvin mentioned, Martin mentioned, a lot of this work really focused on one particular corridor. I mentioned three of the top five intersections were in college, and that's right in line with what Martin, I think, has known for quite some time, and the city's known for quite some time, that it, that is a high-risk corridor. So that really helps make work on that corridor, on the college corridor, ripe for applying for grants, and this is going to be a great opportunity for the city to do that. And so really, this is important. You know, when we're talking about safety on city streets, it's, it's, it's us driving the streets, it's our neighbors, it's our friends, and, and really, target zero, it is a very aspirational goal. Zero fatalities in, now it's five years. But really, anything more than that, you're accepting something that we really shouldn't accept. You're saying, you know, if we say, what's the target? One fatality, that's probably not the right way to go. So zero is a good aspiration of goal. It shows the city has leadership, shows the city cares about, you know, making the city streets safer. And as Martin also said, by approving this plan and signing the resolution, it allows the city to check a box to be eligible for, hopefully, millions of dollars in federal funding to address some of the high-risk corridors, and College Street is going to be a great example for that. And I'll kick it back to Martin. Get anything to add, Martin?
We'll be happy to answer any questions.
I would move to approve Resolution eleven sixty-seven, establishing a vision zero policy, including the SS four A safety action plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Go ahead.
I probably already know the answer, but I'm just, the, the Martin and Carpenter intersection, I'm guessing that was left off because it's considered county.
It is in the county.
Yeah, is that, is like the epicenter of high risk for, you know, for the area, it seems. And basically, all of Martin and that area just seem to be extraordinarily dangerous, so.
Well, it's extremely difficult to cross.
Yeah.
Number one.
Yeah.
But what, and I, yeah, I, I know we've done some work looking at that and working with the county on, on what we can do, and there are some ideas going, going down. But I know specifically, when you talk of College Street, we, I mean, College Street is one of the busiest corridors that we have, and it's probably the busiest corridor we have in, in Lacey.
Marvin's becoming competitive.
Marvin's getting right there because of everything up to, you know, north and, yeah, it's getting close. But, but specifically, you look at the, the one intersection that is so dangerous with College Street and Lacey Boulevard, I, I know, I turn on that all the time. And, and the issue is, some people know you can take a left, other people don't. There's real, there's no guidance on the poll. So like, everyone's taking a different shot. Can you do it from, can you do it from both lanes? Can you only do it from one lane? And then, on the other side of the street, we, sometimes that gets overgrown with vegetation. And now you're like, eh, is there a car coming? And the car's, car's speeding? And sure enough, there's tons of accidents that happen right there.
Actually, there's not that much on the left turn on the right ball. We've looked at that, we've been tracking it.
So where's all the, that's the highest.
We do have a lot of red light running, is what it is, when you start looking at them.
Okay.
In that area, too, there's an abundance of cars who turn down that road going the wrong direction. And I feel like there's got to be something we can do to have more signage or something.
Look at College Phase Three, because that good does go from college and Twenty-Second Roundabout all the way to Lacey Boulevard. We did line up those roadways a lot better than they are now.
Okay.
Well, you know, speaking of the Roundabout at Twenty-Second, the second phase, right? We all walked that before and after it was developed, right?
I remember.
And that alone, being a pedestrian walking on the sidewalk, the before and after warrants this. You know what I mean? And that's just the walking. There's a school right there. So the next phase, if it's going to be anything and improve to even the slightest degree, the improvements that were made on the second phase, then this is hands down, I mean, makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah, I guess I, of course, I'm all in favor, and I'm going to support this, and it's long overdue, and we should be doing everything we can to get to target zero. I absolutely agree with that. I'm, I was just wondering, is there like any small things that we can do? In the meantime, in some of these intersections where we don't necessarily have to wait for a grant, but we could do, I mean, is there something else?
That would be helpful. I mean, education is part of it, and that's part of the program, too. We got to get, stop people from driving. I'd rather have the cars driving, make life a whole lot easier on us.
No, I, I agree. My, my car drives itself all the time, and it makes way better decisions than I do. Okay, is there? Is there?
Elon will solve it for us pretty soon.
Is there anything else?
I just say, all, in all seriousness, this is definitely warranted, and I think it's, you know, I'm glad we're doing this, especially if there's a chance of the grant money will run out. Now's the time.
Any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution eleven sixty-seven, the Safety Action Plan, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next resolution is the eleven sixty-eight Investment Policy Amendments. Troy.
Great, thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, council. For your consideration tonight is a resolution that will amend the city's investment policy. It's been our practice each year, we meet with our investment advisor, we talk strategy, we talk about potential policy updates. So this is really born from that. We have a pretty straightforward recommendation for council tonight. It's really a one-word change. It's in section eight of the policy. This simply will increase the frequency of the reporting for on-investments. So we're changing from a quarterly report to a monthly report. So you can see that in the redline version of the policy. Our plan is to continue to come to council with a full report twice a year, once at mid-year and once at year-end. The remaining ten reports will go to the city manager. This will help us become more in alignment with state guidance in terms of investment frequency. And of course, this just increases oversight of the program itself. So the count, the staff recommendation is for the council to approve the resolution, thus updating the investment policy.
Move to adopt Resolution number one-one-six-eight, amending the city's investment policy.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Is this going to have an added cost by going to monthly compared to quarterly?
It'll just be staff time, but yeah, there'll be no out-of-pocket cost for the city.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is... Onto the city manager's report. Wait.
No.
Critical ordinance. Never mind. Ordinance sixteen seventy-eight, the critical areas, Hans.
Good evening. It's getting a little lonely back there. So, good evening, council members. I'm Hans Shepherd, I'm a senior long-range planner here at the city. Tonight, I'm going to be running through critical areas ordinance amendments. This last was in front of you guys at a work session, I believe on February twenty-fifth. So this is coming back around to you this time as a potential ordinance, sixteen seventy-eight. And I do have a clicker. So yeah, this is just a really high-level overview. This is something that is required as part of the Growth Management Act. It's on a ten-year rolling update cycle. We last updated this in twenty seventeen, I believe, yep. And then, so it's also being advanced as part of our kind of larger body of work, as part of the comprehensive plan, just in an adjacent kind of track that we're also advancing. The big takeaway of this update is that these updates that are being put forward are really have to do with best available science. Over time, we get better at figuring things out, and not necessarily we or me specifically, but people that are trained in this, these topics, scientists specifically, Department of Commerce, but then also different agencies that are kind of content experts in these different fields. So they put out new research, new reports, new studies, and we're just really updating our code to reflect that best available science, new information as it comes out. But yeah, here at Lacey, we have our definition of what is best available science. And then it's also supplemented by Washington Administrative Code that goes into some additional detail, offers some additional context on really what that means in practice. I'm not going to read our full definition here, but it is up there, and it is in your packet. It's in our code. Two things that I wanted to highlight in the Washington Administrative Code section, making sure that it's repeatable, and then also really where we're getting this information from. So the subject experts are those state agencies that I talked about, and we'll get into that in a little bit here. But as part of this update process, we update the draft based on guidance provided by Commerce, and then we actually send it out to these different agencies for an opportunity to review. They provide additional comments, feedback, which is all actually included in your packet. Based on that feedback, we update the draft. We also work it through Planning Commission, we also work it through current planning. They're really actually the ones that touch a lot of these documents, or I should say, codes the most. And then we also take it to Planning Commission through public hearing, and then to you guys previously at the work session and now here tonight. This is just a bit of a crosswalk. So within the RCW, it requires five types of critical areas that we have codes that are specific to. These include wetland areas, habitat conservation areas, flood hazard areas, aquifer recharge areas, and geologically sensitive areas. And on the right-hand side is really just our codes, our chapters that align with each one of those requirements, so you can see what we're talking about. And then as far as this update, these are really the types of changes that we did. So really, they're updating references, so pointing to new reports, updating definitions, adding clarification where it's necessary. Sometimes there's vague language, so we're just strengthening it a bit. And then I did want to, the highlighted section, so actually, the only thing that we've changed since we took it to you at the work session is that we moved one of the definitions from, I believe, the wetland chapter to our subdivision chapter because it related to subdivisions. So instead of trying to track that down in a separate chapter, keeping it all in one place. So that's really the one change between tonight's presentation and the February review that we had. And then, critical area permitting process. I did want to add this as a slide, just to kind of give you an idea of what we work through when an application comes in, that some kind of critical area has been identified on-site. So whether it's a steep slope, or wetland stream, any kind of buffer, this is kind of the process that we, starting at pre-submit, pre-submission conference, work through with an applicant to identify any kind of areas of concerns, any regulations or restrictions that they would have to update or abide by as part of their application. And then we actually also pull in those different agencies as necessary. So the ones that provided that language, additional areas of best available science, we actually bring them into it to consult as needed, to confirm that we're really approaching this and moving it forward properly. From there, depending on what kind of critical area it is and what's being proposed, it might move to a public hearing, and then final decision to reflect the regulatory requirements. But that's typically what we, what we would work through based on these codes and regulations that we're looking at tonight. And then really, just as far as the timeline, getting all the way to where we are today. We started this process last year in twenty twenty-four, and have worked it all the way through these different stages to this evening. Think, yeah, so as far as what's before you tonight, two different options, and this is all in the staff report, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Can I get a motion, please? One more time?
No, I was going to read it off there, took it off.
Move to approve ordinance sixteen seventy-eight, adopting amendments to LMC fourteen twenty-eight, wetland protection, comment fourteen point three-three, habitat conservation area protection, fourteen three four, wood flood hazard prevention, fourteen point three-six, critical aquifer recharge area protection, fourteen thirty-six, point thirty, thirty-seven, I mean, geological sensitive areas protection, and fifteen point one-two, design standards for subs, subdivisions, and short subdivisions and binding site plans.
Second.
Sorry, my allergies were blurring my eyes, and I was struggling there.
There's a lot there.
Motion and second to update ordinance sixteen seventy-eight, the critical areas ordinance. Any discussion?
Just want to thank Hans for the great work on this. I know it's a heavy lift.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance sixteen seventy-eight, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I get to the city manager's report, or the mayor's report, I guess this, this time's any talk about our meeting yesterday, just a high overview. It, it seems like, you know, the, the, obviously, the more we've grown as a city, the, the more there's things out there that, you know, that requires attention. And, and it seems like I've just been going nonstop, doing mayor stuff lately. But one of the things that had, was been brought to my attention, I've been sort of looking at behind the scenes, was there was someone in the Department of Natural Resources office who started looking at vacant DNR land within urban growth areas and city boundaries, and started looking, trying to compile all of that and see if there was a possibility for those properties to be converted into affordable housing, because we're in this affordable housing crisis. One parcel in particular was looked at, and within our urban growth area. And one of the things that was, they were targeting is cheap land, because you need the cheap land, because, to make the numbers work for affordable housing. And in this particular circumstances, there was a... And, and this particular circumstances, there, there was, uh, some land that was relatively inexpensive, and the reason why it was relatively expensive, because it didn't have sewer connection to it. And so the, the, their next step was to see if they could get a federal grant to bring in sewer, and if that happened, they're, they'd have a partnership with, hopefully with, have that for humanity, and, and I was sort of being updated behind the scenes all along, saying, yeah, I mean, that, let's see how far, you know, we can go, but I'd love to have more affordable housing in our community. Then there was a turnover in administrations, and, and then whenever there's turnover, you know, staff turns over. And so the person who was in charge of this project was no longer than on staff, and it, and it sort of like was in limbo because a, a federal ask happened, and then they weren't sure if that still need to go through. And, long story short, um, that federal, uh, the, that federal ask is still on the books and look like it could possibly come through, and so the next step was to see if the current, um, Public Lands Commissioner was still on board with the prior administration's vision of doing projects like this. Plus, we wanted to know, there's other properties in Lacey that are DNR properties that we'd love to see if we could work out an opportunity with them to, to do something with those properties as well. So I reached out to the commissioner and, um, and we had a meeting yesterday, um, at DNR. Was that yesterday?
Yes, yesterday.
Yeah. And so, uh, long story short, everything sort of looks like it's progressing, they're just waiting to see if the dollars can come through, and then we need to work with the county and, and, and possibly the Regional Housing Council, and, and see what the next steps would be for this to happen. But good news was that the commissioner was all in favor of thinking outside the box on stuff like this, and it, we're just sort of waiting to see what the next steps are. And so we're gonna actually, uh, talk to the county behind the scenes. We've been talking to them a little bit, um, and just give them an update, and we'll sort of have to wait to see what the next step is. So that's just a example of stuff that's going on behind the scenes that the council doesn't necessarily know about.
Quick question on that. How big is this property? It's, uh, twenty-seven acres. Oh, significant.
Yeah, and, um, if you sewer it, uh, you can get, uh, you know, decent numbers of, um, home ownership, you know, with habitat for humanity in there. And so it's still, like, a bunch of steps have to happen for this all to work out, but, um, it's, I sort of liked the out-of-the-box thinking to see if this could happen. So that's, was my yesterday. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager's report.
Thank you. I have a couple items on the city manager's report tonight. Uh, first, I have the, uh, kind of annual update of, uh, Animal Services Operations. I'll invite our Animal Services Executive Director, Sarah Hockup, to provide that, uh, report. Let's see, Hans moved up, so he's not so lonely in the back.
It can be a long walk. Well, first off, I need to apologize. Rick told me that my presentation was actually canceled today because I didn't bring any furry animals with me. So I hope, um, that you guys will forgive me and allow me to continue today anyway. But good evening, mayor, council. I appreciate your time tonight to be able to talk about my favorite thing, which is joint animal services. Or, what? There we go. Okay. So I always like to talk about our achievements and brag about my team a little bit. Last year, we had a total of five thousand six hundred and twenty-six volunteer hours contributed to joint animal services with a total number of a hundred and forty volunteers. Um, the average hours given per volunteer last year was over forty hours. And what that breaks down to, when you look about the values of volunteers, especially here in Washington State, um, Washington State volunteers are valued at forty dollars per hour. So for us, the number of hours given equivalates to two-point-seven FTEs, um, with a total amount of over two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars that volunteers contributed in their hours last year. We also had, um, a total of four-hundred-and-forty-five animals that went into foster. The majority of those were cats. One of the things that we're very excited about is we had our first, what we call our court case foster. Um, so our court cases are usually very special needs animals that require some intensive care. Sometimes it can be medically or behavioral intensive care, and so for the first time ever last year, we were able to get, um, one of those animals into foster for the duration of the court case, um, so that they could reside in a home and not in the shelter. We also participated in twenty-five community events that equivalates to an event every other week. Um, these included adoption events, information booths, um, and fundraising events. So some examples of that is Love a Pitbull Day. We'd have an annual fundraiser, adoption event, and pet costume contest at Top Rung Brewery, uh, Ole Wines, and Mutts in the Maze, which was cosponsored by, uh, Olympia Subaru. Um, and we also created the Animal Allies Club in partnership with Timberland Library. And so monthly, a staff member goes to do an animal, Animal Allies Club, where they talk about animals, animal responsibilities, do a craft, um, for either their pets at home or to donate back to the shelter animals. And we were successful to also expand this into Yum, Timberland Library. Last year was also the first year that we had, um, a full year with our vet team. So I have talked to council before, um, about some of our needs and how we built our surgery suite and medical treatment area. And so last year, which was our first full year, our veterinary team, which is a mighty team of two, a veterinarian and a vet assistant, we added an LVT on this year. But they completed over two thousand exams, um, over twelve hundred, um, spay neuter surgeries, and also did sixty-four other surgical procedures. So things like dentals, eye removals, leg amputations, um, in addition to those spay neuter surgeries. So it was quite a great year for our very first year having a vet team. We're very excited. Some other achievements are feel, our animal welfare and field services manager, she was elected by her peers to the Washington Animal Control Association, um, and I was also elected by my peers to the National Animal Care and Control Association Board of Directors. We're gonna talk a little bit about stats because I love numbers. Animal intake has continually gone up year over year. Um, it dropped initially in the pandemic, like most shelters across the country, but we are continually on moving upwards with a total of over thirty-three-hundred animals. One of the good news is, is that with the medical team on board and operational efficiencies, we've actually reduced the length of stay of animals in our shelter by three days. So we went from an average length of stay for an animal from the moment of intake until they leave our building was eleven days, um, down to seven. Now, this was just for some perspective, back in twenty nineteen, when I joined, joined animal services, we were actually looking at about four weeks was our length of stay. So with operational efficiencies, the goal is to keep animals moving through the system, not sitting stagnant, because when they sit at the shelter, that's when they get stressed, that's when they get sick. And so it actually saves money in the long run by moving them through the system faster, and it's better for their overall, overall, um, physical and mental well-being. Just a little bit of an intake breakdown by dog, cat, wildlife, but when I talk about wildlife, that's usually orphaned, um, wildlife, such as sometimes a baby fawn, but usually, it's usually orphaned raccoons or opossums. Um, and then other is usually our pocket pets, um, occasional snakes, bearded dragons, a parrot here or there, hamster. Something to note, though, we did see an, almost a twenty-eight percent increase in dogs alone last year. And we are trending that way again this year already. So it is something that we're keeping an eye on, um, but we're definitely seeing that upwards trend of intake specifically for dogs. Thankfully, um, all of the programs that we have implemented, such as our community cat program, has helped, uh, begin to reduce our cat numbers. So while we're still seeing that intake, we are mitigating some of that with some of the programs that we have implemented. This is just a breakdown, again, of looking at that by jurisdiction, by the four that participate in the inter-local agreement. The City of Lacey was about twenty-one percent of the total intake, which is about in line of what your overall assessment is between the four jurisdictions. So it's pretty on par, um, with the assessments. I also don't wanna forget about positive outcomes. We continue, um, in an upward trend as well. We had one of the best years yet when it comes to adoptions, with over fifteen hundred animals adopted last year. Transfers are slightly down, but that's nothing that we're worried about. Um, all the other shelter partners and rescues are just as full as we are, which means they don't have as much space, and that kind of ebbs and flows. RTO has stayed pretty static over the years. We have the same number of animals getting returned to their owner. Um, and then community cats, as the program continues to expand, so does the number of cats and community members that we serve. Last year, we did a, over two hundred community cats, spay neuters, and, uh, trap neuter, vaccinate, return into the community. This is just example of one of our programs at work. This is Cinder. Cinder actually came to us, uh, she was believed to be hit by a car. So we actually had our first contact with Olympia Pet Emergency. And it was because of the combination of our vet team, as well as our foster team, that Cinder was able to have a positive outcome. So she had three life-saving surgeries, um, at our facility. She had a leg amputation, a pyometra, and she also had an abdominal hernia repair. And because of our foster program, she was able to recover in her foster home, and her foster mom advocated for her, um, in the community, and actually ended up getting her adopted by a friend. So she gets to see Cinder all the time. So this is just one example of many. She's a little tripod kitty now, um, but does great. Field response, field response, again, continues to be up year over year. As we, um, what we normally see too trending is when we are in the news with certain cases, those are usually the cases that typically, um, become a little bit more frequent because people are knowing what to look out for or even self-identify. For example, in twenty twenty-three, um, after a large-scale hoarding case, we actually had five other hoarding houses self-identify, seeking help. And so that's usually what happens with these cases. But year over year, we're starting to see more frequent issues. A lot of it is more misdemeanor-based, but there are an increase in neglecting cruelty cases as well. Overall increase for the four jurisdictions, uh, Lacey actually saw a twenty-one percent increase in field response, so that we had an increase in call-outs for the City of Lacey. You were number two in the increase in call-out, with Thurston County had an increase of twenty-three-point-five in calls. Overall, arching calls between the four jurisdictions, as well as our contract partners, we saw an overall increase of eighteen-point-six percent. Some stories to talk about our field case. Our team likes to get creative. We don't want to go out and repeatedly go out to a case, right? We want to look at it creatively and think about what is the root cause of an issue. And so in this case, for example, uh, we jointly went out with, uh, TCSO, because there was a combination of livestock as well as pet animals on-site, um, that included over forty Great Pyrenees-type dogs. The creation of this, um, we went out initially on a welfare check for inadequate shelter, um, and inadequate food, but the result of this was uncontrolled breeding. The owner had originally started with eight Great Pyrenees to help with livestock, um, with the lacks of, lack of access to veterinary care, that's not just here, but nationwide. Spay neuter services have become quite unaffordable with, on the low end, being six hundred dollars. On the high end, you're looking more like a thousand to fifteen hundred, depending on the size of the dog and that, whether or not it's a spay or a neuter. So financially, it's not always feasible for somebody to get a spay neuter to prevent, um, unwanted litters, and that's what happened in this case. It was not intentional, um, it was really in a means of lack of resources and it just frustrating all the way around. So we problem-solved with this, and we actually got him down to his original eight. We placed several of the animals into different rescues, so any of the puppies that he had, we coordinated with different rescues, and did some coordinated intake, so it wasn't on us all at once either, um, overwhelming our system. And what we did when we got him down to his original eight is we actually spay and neutered his animals for him. So problem solved. And so our officers don't have to go out again, but we got creative in our solution, understanding that sometimes resources aren't available to people, and they are, they're doing the best they can with what they have. Another example of this is some field casework. So two of our officers were actually out on a different call, um, coming back and they saw a dog running loose, picked it up for the safety, because it was running along the road. And what our officers are trained to do is when they pick up an animal running loose, they're, uh, they are trained to patrol the neighborhood, ask around, make contact with people walking, um, knock on houses to see if anybody recognizes the dog. We have microchip scanners in the vehicles, and as it turns out, while we stayed in the neighborhood looking for the owner, the owner found us. She flagged us down because she saw our truck, wanted to let us know that she was missing her dogs, and we had both in the back of the truck. So we were able to reunite right there. She didn't have to come down to the shelter or pay any fees to reclaim her animals. And so that's about what our field work is as well, is being a part of the community and creating community results. Now to update everybody on, um, the space needs assessment, as council knows, we have been in an ongoing, um, exploratory, um, consultation with what it would look like to have a new building. As council remembers, we participated in the capital facilities plan, and we were marked the second worst building in the City of Lacey, um, and were given a failing grade. So when we did the capital facilities plan, um, they estimated at that time, we would need roughly almost twenty-seven thousand square-foot facility, um, to be able to continue to service the community as it grows. When we contracted with Animal Arts the following year, um, they worked with staff and community members and volunteers and City of Lacey staff, um, to initiate a first concept, uh, which was a little bit bigger than originally estimated, but after we took a couple of looks at it, um, wanting to make sure we are being fiduciary responsible, really looking at what this community needed and the realities of the types of services that we can provide, um, it came down to what we call our revised value engineer concept, um, that is just under twenty thousand square feet. So this is what the initial concept plan looks like. It includes integrated dog kennel areas so that both, um, animals up for adoption, as well as stray animals, are all in the same space. Uh, community members can view them. It helps, um, people find their pets, but also helps with placement faster, because people can put holds on animals that if they are not reclaimed, they can adopt right then and like, as soon as their hold is up. Cat spaces are integrated with both individual as well as colony rooms, so people can interact. We do have critter space, because the biggest thing that I wanna emphasize is our current building is, does not meet the national standards of care for animal sheltering. It's not anybody's fault. The building was retrofitted in nineteen ninety-six, before animal sheltering architecture was a thing, and the standards of care didn't even come out until two thousand and ten. And those were developed by the Association of Shelter Veterinarians. And so our current building does not meet those in many ways, uh, several of which are the fact that, uh, the cats can hear the dogs, and we have no separate place for our critters to go, um, because critters are usually prey animals and cats are usually the predator, and we usually have to house them in the same room currently, because that's all we have. And then our veterinary clinic is a mobile building outside of the shelter. So it's a lot of back and forth when it's surgery days, um, and a lot of additional time. Again, still the benefit of having one in-house versus having to drive to different community clinics to provide services. But in this integrated, um, scheme, everything would be in one building. It has estimated growth, so we have a little bit of additional space for staff needs. It takes into account that our intake also becomes a resource center, and it also allows with where the veterinary clinic is, if we chose to expand in the future, for example, doing a public clinic, we could add additional space onto that in the future. So the total estimated building, um, and this has several factors in it, but anywhere between thirty-three million and forty-one-point-five million dollars for a new building. Most of this variance does come from site acquisition, as we all know, excuse me. As we all know, excuse me, varying sites really change the cost, whether there's utilities, where it's located, all of this. And then also if it's ready to build on or if we actually have to do any site work, right? And so that's going to be some of our biggest variance when it comes to that is site as well as how much we have to develop. There is some leeway in the building itself, depending on how we choose to construct. But overall, we're looking at around an 8.5 million dollar variance, depending on when we build and all of that. Some partner considerations that we've been talking to the jurisdictions about is looking at veterinary services. Our other revenue sources to build the buildings, so it's not a full cost to the jurisdictions themselves. What that financial model looks like and what financial tools do we have and resources for us when looking at this new building. So some examples, Joint Animal Services has already calculated kind of on our end from Jazzcom, what we can contribute. So we do have an estimated use of $1 million from our reserves. We have also received several generous bequests that have been asked to contribute to a capital campaign. And we also received $1 million in state funding this year, thanks to the efforts of District 22 and Representative partially sponsoring that bill. And then it also takes into consideration the sale of the property as well as any kind of grant funding we can get from animal welfare, national organizations or other means of grant funding as well as local donations. So Joint Animal Services is looking at basically contributing around 1.75, I'm sorry, 7.5 million dollars towards that building fund. So some partner considerations. We did create a working group with the four jurisdictions to start beginning, those beginning discussions of what funding looks like. Some of those considerations that we need to consider under the current ILA. We do have a section in our finance that talks about loans being paid off per capita. But there's also finance, other financial tools that we could be considering such as a bond, a PDA. And then there's the option of the animal control district next legislative system. And with that, I will hand it over for questions from council.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up on my city manager report tonight is a topic I know that the council has been aware and been talking about for several, several months. It's related to the Lot Clean Water Alliance surplus property. And like to turn it over to our community economic development director, Vanessa Dobie, to provide an update and request of council.
Great, well, good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight for your consideration, the discussion regarding the acquisition of the Mullen Road property at 5029. As Rick Walk mentioned, this is also known as the Lot Property at Mullen Road. So this conversation, it's been before the council at a couple of different work sessions through 2024 and through this year. The property initially came to us back in March of 2024, where we entered into a memorandum of understanding with Lot to consider the purchase of this property. So as a part of that MOU, we were looking at this property under the concept of a potential affordable housing development opportunity. And the MOU also gave us opportunity to work through due diligence on this property. So by way of reminder, the property is approximately a little over five acres. It's located right across the street from Camatcha Middle School. It's currently zoned, open space institutional and is of course owned by Lot currently. So as a part of the due diligence efforts, we started with an appraisal of the property, which came in at around $700,000 for the property. But in addition to the appraisal, we conducted a gopher study to see if the property had gophers on it or any gopher habitat. The good news was it came back that it does not. And then in addition to that, we took it one step further and we developed a conceptual cottage development plan and took it through our formal pre-sub process in community economic development, which allowed both public works engineering as well as building and our current planning land use department to do a formal review. And really the conclusion of all of those efforts is that the property is developable. And so there is opportunity here. Okay, next slide. So in addition to the efforts at looking at the property, there was a couple of additional steps. And in March of 2025, the council adopted ordinance 1673. This ordinance allowed for formal regulations for the council to consider deposition of surplus property for affordable housing purposes. And this was a newer regulation passed by the state under RCW 3933015 that allows cities and/or organizations such as Lot to consider surplusing public property as long as it's designated for affordable housing purposes for less than the appraised value. So once this formal ordinance was adopted and enacted into Lacey Municipal Code, it provided an opportunity for the city manager as well as the director of Lot to enter into a purchase and sales agreement. And that was conducted in April of 2025. So as a part of that purchase and sales agreement, there is an identified purchase price of $450,000 from Lot for this property. Provided however, that the property is used for affordable housing purposes consistent with the RCW as well as our adopted ordinance under 1673. However, the purchase and sales agreement does provide a additional clause that if for some reason the council or the city decided not to use this property for affordable housing purposes, they could repay Lot the $250,000 additional cost to get up to that $700,000 in appraised value as well as an inflation factor of around 3% if we wanted to use it for a different, a different purpose than affordable housing. And then lastly, the purchase and sales agreement did identify that acquisition would happen in June of 2025. So based on the efforts of due diligence and the determination that the property is developable and the opportunity for partnership for future affordable housing and the reduced price of $450,000, staff is recommending that council approve the acquisition of the property located at 5025 Mullen Road. $450,000 plus half the escrow fees and the fee and other fees incidental to the sale. And with that, I can answer any questions.
I would move to authorize the city manager to acquire property located at 5025 Mullen Road Southeast from Lot Clean Water Alliance pursuant to the terms of the April 16, 2025 purchase and sale agreement.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, some discussion. Is the 450,000 what Lot originally purchased? Is that, how do you, how'd you come up with that number?
Yes, it's their original purchase price of the, of the property. And they decided to take that action. I don't know if Councilor Cox has more to add, but they decided to take that action based on the being used for affordable housing purposes.
Right, the whole lot board had to agree to that. And I, I pushed it through and they agreed, so.
Great. And then can you remind me what the next step will be? We go ahead and agree with this and buy this property. What's the, what's the next step going to be?
Yeah, absolutely. So as you may be aware, we have been in conversations with affordable housing partner to move forwards with potential development opportunities. So if the council chooses to acquire this property, we will begin discussions with them in terms of what are the terms? In terms of what, what the development process may look like? Are there anything additional that we want to see in terms of that? Develop up a formal agreement for sale of that property to them and come back before the council with those, with those details.
Right. Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to, for council to prove the acquisition of the property located at 5025 Mullen Road Southeast in Lacey for $450,000 plus one half of the escrow fees and other fees incidental to the sale. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you. And next, I would invite Han Shepherd up, back up to the lectern. He'll give a briefing on a proposed interlocal agreement. As the council knows, we have the pre-approved plans for our ADU program. They need to be updated, meet current energy and building codes. And Hans will be able to provide some of the details behind this interlocal agreement.
Good evening. Putting on a different hat here. So back in January of this year, I think on the 21st, we were actually in front of you previously about the interlocal agreement. At that time, I think you all directed the city manager to enter into that agreement. That said, by the time city of Lacey and the other partner jurisdictions within that interlocal agreement finally got around to formalizing that and got back to the architecture firm and the engineering firm, their fee schedule had gone up. So this really is to update that interlocal agreement to reflect the increased fee schedule. That would be initially, it was, I should say, the Lacey portion of that was right around $12,000. And based on the updated fee schedule, it would have, it would potentially go up $4,160.40 to a total of $16,125.21. And really that payment is for the update of our existing four ADU pre-approved plans to be in alignment with both, both the International Residential Code and the Washington State Energy Code. And then also for the creation of a thousand square foot ADU addition to our portfolio consistent with House Bill 1337, which is now requiring that to be the maximum square footage of allowable ADU. But yeah, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I get motion, please?
He called for questions.
Or.
Do the motion and then discussion afterwards, right? I'd move to authorize the city manager to enter into the interlocal agreement with the cities of Olympia, Tomwater and Yelm for the update to the pre-approved accessory dwelling unit program.
Second. So is Thurston County not part of this?
So they are not. That was actually one of the reasons that our negotiations of the interlocal agreement took so long. For a significant portion of that time, we were under the belief that they were going to be participating. But at the end of it, they are not, so.
Okay.
Do they have a different program in mind or?
Not currently.
I'm, I'm just curious, I mean, I mean, it's small dollars, but that's like a 33% increase from, over the course of just a few months.
Yeah, so.
Seems pretty significant.
I will say it was, it was close to a year about, by the time we initially got that quote and when we went back to them at the end of it. And I will say that we caught them, I think, the first time around, right at the sweet spot before they had updated their, their fee schedule. And then this time around, they had some catching up to do. So that is kind of reflective of that price jump.
We are adding a new thousand foot square ADU.
That was included in the 12,000.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
So I mean, we're getting the exact same service, but the price went up 33% in a year. That just seems like a pretty dramatic increase for a one-year difference.
Yep. Any other, any other discussion?
So it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to enter into this new update interlocal agreement between the cities of Olympia, Tomwater and Yelm to update the pre-approved accessory dwelling unit program. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hans. Last thing, item I have is an announcement. Leave, well, Nicole sent all of you an email announcing a future build date with Habitat for Humanity to occur on Friday, July 18th from 7:30 to 2:30. And that built, Habitat for Humanity build day will be at the, their Talison Project located on 73rd Avenue in Tomwater. And all the details are in that email. So if council is interested in participating in that day, with an open up with Habitat for Humanity, please let Nicole or I know. We're also offering this opportunity to city of Lacey staff as well to have a city of Lacey build day. So just want to draw your attention to that email. And again, if you're interested in participating, let me and Nicole know. So that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Onto council reports. I'm up first, but I don't have my report of significance, so. Councilmember Greenstein.
Just a couple of quick reports. TCOM 911 met on May 7th. The only thing I really want to talk a little bit about was just the ongoing site work for the radio system. You'd heard me talk several times about station 82 and the difficulties we had with getting that done. That is final now. We've completed that, that site. Now, the only site left that's still being worked on is the DuPont site, which is actually JBLM property. And that's a, a long, drawn-out federal process to get that done. And a lot of complications there, so I won't get into the detail. The phone replacement schedule is on track and should have a cut over in November. And some staffing changes, just as we've talked about over the last few years, we've had a shortage of staffing of call takers and, you know, dispatchers. We are finally have made six new hires this year, have offers out to six additional, three of whom are former employees who are coming back into the system, which is great because they're much quicker to train. Looks like we should be fully staffed this year for the first time in, I don't know how many years it's been, but it's been a struggle. And then EMS medic one met on the 22nd of May. First of five medic units that were ordered quite a long time ago. And due to COVID and other issues, took years longer than they should have to get here. But we've taken delivery of the first of the five medic units. The other four are scheduled to be here by the end of this year. And I also just wanted to comment a little bit on a pilot program that just started, I think, two weeks ago. In fact, I think Lacey just took, started it this week, correct? Pilot program for field administration of Suboxone. And you'd heard me talk about this a little while back, a few, several months ago, and we were in the planning stages for it. But that project is in a test phase now, a pilot program. So we have started the, the, while out in the field, medics now can deliver Suboxone. They can now leave behind Narcan. And it is all tied to peer counseling and an actual referral to peer counseling. We've actually had our first patient go through this process now with the peer counseling, with the referral. And they're transporting them to get their treatment and so far looks really good. Again, it's only been one patient, but Olympia, I think, kicked it off first, the following week, Tomwater. And then just this week, Lacey fired, kicked off their program. So we have, we're excited about this one. We really think it could have a meaningful difference in the outcomes for people. So that is my report.
Before we go on to Councilmember Stedman, I, I know you're our appointment to the opioid abatement council's independent subcommittee. What is the status of that?
Sure. So we've had, we've had two meetings. Our next meeting is tomorrow. The first two meetings were really talking about process and talking about what we're allowed to do with the money, what the regulations are regarding that money. And then we kind of got stuck in waiting now for the interlocal agreement to be finalized. So that's kind of where we are right now. That we can actually canceled the third meeting and it's now scheduled, like you said, rescheduled for tomorrow. And I had the idea behind tomorrow's meeting, and I don't know if Rick has any further insight into it, but hopefully we have more information back on the interlocal agreement or maybe Dave might have some. I know he's been involved in that.
We.
It had to be redone for the sharing of the money.
Yeah, it's what, we have a current interlocal agreement that says that we will, every jurisdiction will have their own dollars. And we want to go back and amend that ILA to allow it to be pulled and the opioid abatement council to make recommendations of how those dollars will be spent. And so again, it's this, we got some tentative language that they agreed to at the staff level, but one of the, the council, newly appointed council to weigh in on that and make recommendations back to their home electee bodies. So that should be coming forward. I haven't seen an agenda or information on this tomorrow night's meeting.
All I've seen is that the meeting is on, I confirmed that the meeting is scheduled tomorrow. I've not seen an agenda yet either.
Yeah, because originally the, the agreement was set up where each jurisdiction had control. And if we wanted a partner, we could do that. But to make it more efficient, we wanted to make sure that those dollars can be pulled to, at the opioid abatement council level. And then the county would still be the ones that would ultimately decide what that process would be if they had a different opinion. So it'd go back and ultimately it would set up a situation if nobody could agree, we all would get our dollars back to spend how we want to.
Yeah, we, we didn't, hopefully that'll be on tomorrow's agenda. But the unanimous position of everyone on the abatement council was. of everyone on the abatement council was that, in sharing the money, yes, but also in doing it similar to the way RHC does it as far as how that process is handled. So the county is the controlling party, but the concern was, no one really wanted, recommendations that go to the county commission, didn't want them to have the ability to change them. So the idea is they will, they can either approve them, or they can send them back to the council for further, you know, to look at them further, but they can't change the recommendation. And if we can't come to agreement, the money can still then go back to the individual jurisdictions. But clearly, because of the amount of money, we have, we can have a far greater impact pooling that money than any of us can individually using it.
Because we've, we've been collecting that money, right, Troy?
That's correct. Most of the settlements are multi-year installments. At the end of 2024, we had about $350,000 in a restricted reserve for this purpose.
Okay.
And countywide, between all the jurisdictions, the last number I heard was we have about 5 million of the, of the money currently.
Well, that's.
So I mean, it's, it's a number, it's something that, you know, hopefully can be used to have some positive impact.
Okay, thank you. I just haven't heard anything for a bit, so. Councilmember Stebbin.
All right, Thurston County Law and Justice met on the 15th of May, and we got recommendations from the National Center for State Court and State Justice Institute. The recommendations for improving, improving the security part, secure, superior court practices and ultimately making a more timely justice process for everybody involved. So, and then you've heard me report on the data culture collection that's been going on for months with the county, and they're looking, we, we had a consensus to form a work group to go through the data and all that, and then they're going to collect it, analyze it, and report back to us, and I'll report on that later. It was a pretty quick meeting, but that's nuts and bolts of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
I have two reports tonight. Before my reports, I do want to report out on two other activities. I was asked to be the keynote speaker for the Memorial Day Service at the Capitol Rotunda. This is hosted by the Veterans Council, along with Lieutenant Governor Denny Heck and Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland. It was quite the honor and a lovely, lovely service. So Lacey was well represented there because we get to adopt both of them as former tenants here. And on Sunday, I was able to represent Lacey and read a proclamation for New Life Baptist Church's 50th anniversary celebration, and that was quite a service. Our city manager was there as well. It was amazing concert, dance performances, it was, it was a lovely occasion.
Thank you for filling in for me for that, I really appreciate it.
Happy to do that. So, excuse me, on with reports. Intercity Transit Authority met on May 21st, and highlights of that meeting included approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Intercity Transit and the Amalgamated Transit Union Local 1765. This was an agreement that was like six months, I guess, in, in the bargaining process, but I think we all landed in a good spot eventually. We did go to mediation, but I would think there was one session and came to agreement. We also authorized the general manager to execute contracts with two companies. One is called AVAP, A-V-A-P USA, and Trapeze EAM, and these are four new operating asset management system and enterprise resource planning. They've been working with 37-year-old software and it's just not doing the job anymore. So this is a big contract. Excuse me, it's 15 and a half million dollars. It includes a 10% contingency fee and 10 years of software maintenance and support, not including sales tax, but it was necessary. We authorized the general manager to purchase some vehicle lifts from a company called Sturtel Kony in the amount of 1.3.75 million dollars. We declared an operation supervisor vehicle and a van pool vehicle and one coach vehicle as surplus, and then conducted public hearings on the 2026-2029 Transportation Improvement Plan and the 2026-2030 Draft Capital Improvement Plan. And we received an update from legal counsel Jeff Myers on litigation that Intercity Transit has joined challenging the Department of Transportation's Federal Transit Administration's action imposing new conditions on previously awarded grants without congressional approval. There are now at least 25 and a growing number of agencies from four states that are party to this litigation. And then we welcomed graduating class of bus operators, 18 new operators hit the road this Sunday, May 25th. So that is something to celebrate because a shortage of drivers slowed the return to full service after, you know, as we climbed out of the COVID crisis. And I have a report on Regional Housing Council. We met on May 28th for a business meeting, and then we had a half-day retreat on May 30th. The business meeting included approval of funding for, it used to be called the rightaway funds, and now it's called the encampment resolution program. And this is aimed at helping people who had been living in encampments along I-5 into safer housing options. For the 2024-2025 state fiscal year, Olympia and Thurston County received about $9.5 million to fund the operation of 12 of these, these activities. They are located in the city of Olympia, the city of Lacey. And the 2026 budget that's been approved by the governor is going to see a much smaller allocation of $5.5 million to the Thurston region to continue these programs. The department had a strong interest in supporting the three programs they've already invested in. They are the Maple Lane Enhanced Shelter in Lacey, the Franz Anderson Village in Olympia, and Sandy's Flats, which is a motel that's been converted into permanent supportive housing and operated by Interfaith Works. Maple Court received the largest of the grants at 2.9 million. We also approved 2.75 million in future projects for placements and funding in what's called the Affordable Housing Capital Pipeline. And, and this is a program where we try to have projects lined up, ready to go when funding comes, thus the pipeline. So future, future projects identified for this are $2 million for Habitat for Humanities Boulevard Road Project, Homes First, five allocations of 104,000 each for five affordable housing units, and 236,000 to the Thurston Housing Land Trust for two low-income ownership units. We also approved the Homeless Services Advisory Board's recommendation to contract with a company called Confluence Northwest to facilitate the work of the Lived Experience Housing Steering Committee. And we approved the Homeless Service Advisory Board's recommendations to sole source Catholic Community Services as an alternative service provider for single adult eviction prevention rental assistance if the county does not move forward in contracting with Community Action Council for this work. They had previously been approved, but there had been some issues in the past. The good news there is there's going to be more money. The original allocation was for 328,000, but the Thurston County is receiving more in the homeless consolidated grant funding than they thought. So this amount now has been increased to 763,000. And finally, the retreat was intended to kind of help the Housing Council reestablish its mission. And so the bulk of the retreat was spent on developing new vision and mission statements. The facilitator, Amy Lineker, does recommend that we do follow-up sessions, particularly on governance. That is my very long report.
Councilmember Dunning.
I, I went over this during our meeting earlier, but I figured it'd be good to announce it for the, the council meeting as well, but VCB has selected Michael Day to be its new director. He's coming out of Reno. This was just made this morning. He'll be starting July 7th, but at the meeting mid-month, I'll probably get some more details about that, and, and I'll pass that along when I, when I hear anything, so.
Okay.
And that's it.
Well, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. So without objection, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned, and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.